Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of Chillicothe City Council. Today is March 23rd and it's 7:30. And we have a roll call, please.
Ames, Corcoran.
Here.
Florima.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Needle.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Tratchell.
Here.
Thank you, would you stand with me? Please.
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our last meeting. I trust that the council members have had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any edits or comments, or do we have a motion to approve? I see a motion by Mrs. Gray. Second by Mr. Florima. Roll call.
Corcoran.
Here.
Florima.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Needle.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And the minutes are accepted as presented. Mrs. Gray.
Madam President, I would like to request that we go into executive session, please, to discuss contract issues pending, if we say.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on the motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Needle.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Motion is approved. I have 7:32, we are in executive session. Mrs. Gray.
I take a motion that we return to the executive session.
A motion has been made, return for a second of session, is there a second? Mr. Tratchell. Roll call on the motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Needle.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Next item on our agenda is reports of committees. Mr. Tratchell.
Thank you, President Eleanor. The Parks and Rec Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. Item 1 is to authorize the city auditorium to move the municipal swimming pool department from the general fund for the recreation fund. And at our committee meeting the other night, it was a general feeling that it was the right thing to do. Thing is, we've got to be good stewards of the recreation fund, not to drain that into the pool, just like we were good stewards of the general fund by trying to get as many donations and fundraising as we could to support the pool. We intend on doing the same thing to the recreation fund. In the appropriate time, tonight's the third reading, I urge council's favorable vote to pass that tonight. And item 8 is to grant use of city park and surrounding streets for preparation and operation of increased flowering moon. The legislation is exactly the same as last year, except for the dates. And that concludes my report on Parks and Rec.
Thank you, sir. Other reports, Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Eleanor. The Human Resources Committee has one item on this evening's agenda, it is item 10, first reading for an ordinance to establish rates of pay and other economic benefits for non-classified employees and the classified management level employees of the city. As the legislation has been created, it still has remaining questions. And because of those remaining questions, I will not ask the wait-and-free rule that it will go at least another read while we have those pending questions answered. And I also want to state that the Human Resources Committee took from, or received from, the Finance Committee, a piece of legislation which would be assignment 15-34 for appropriating funding for part-time seasonal employees in the Parks and Recreation Department for calendar year 2015. That will be heard in the HR Committee and will come forward to council from the HR, Human Resources Committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cole.
Safety Service Committee has three items on tonight's agenda, and formerly part of the Finance Committee. Item number 2, which is an ordinance at second reading to appropriate $21,000 of, from the law enforcement trust fund, to be used by the Chillicothe Police Department. This is more or less a bookkeeping ordinance to move monies that we regularly move into that account. At the appropriate time, we will ask that we waive the free-read rule. Item number 3, which is at second reading, is accepting and appropriating $16,259 from the U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial JAG program for body cameras for the Chillicothe Police Department. When the committee met, when the Finance Committee met to discuss this, there were a number of questions that came up, including what were, what planning and thought had been put into implementing the body cameras. I've got some answers on that. The police department has done a lot of research into choosing the vendor to supply these body cameras. Taser International seemed to be a great choice, however, there were high hidden costs in storage. The storage fees were nearly 10 times the cost of a single camera. So they have chosen Data 911, and the company is the same as the one that provides our in-car cameras and computer systems. There are fees associated with storage and licensing, but nowhere near the Taser's Also, one of the questions that came up was, what are the expected costs? The total cost for the system is $17,619.15. The cost includes 17 cameras, an extended warranty, and a licensing fee of $425. Where would the media be stored? It'll be stored in-house on the same server as our dashboard cameras. And why do we need so many cameras was another question, with 17 being more than the number on a regular shift. And the answer is, if we have fewer officers on the street, but we're planning to have extra cameras to allow to rotate for each shift. For example, the first shift would plug in and recharge their cameras at 3:00 PM, and the second shift would be able to use them, use the cameras as they've been charging all day. So that's kind of the plan, to keep these cameras ready to go. Also, if we needed extra cameras for a drug sweep or for any auxiliary officers in the future, we could use those cameras. We'll continue to let this go to third read. We do not have to take action on this until October, so the second, the third read should allow us time to make sure we've answered all questions and we can move forward. Item number 4 is to accept and appropriate $6,550 received as reimbursement from Sprint for Chillicothe Police Department radio upgrades. And this is a reimbursement, I will ask that at the appropriate time that we please waive the free-read rule and accept that money. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Tratchell.
Thank you, President Eleanor. The Finance Committee has four items on tonight's agenda. To appropriate $1,100 to cover fuel expenses for the city electrician for the calendar year 2015, and that was inadvertently left out of the budget. That's the reason why that's on the agenda. Item 6 is to appropriate $1,800 to cover training and travel expenses for our new city electrician. He needs to be traffic certified for our traffic control. This should have been waived and passed our last council session, because that's already taken effect. Our electrician has already gone through this training, and it was paid out of pocket. I will make motion to waive the free-reading rule so we can pass this tonight, so we can refund that money. Item 5 is to appropriate 1,110. I'm sorry. Item 7, to amend ordinance 11514 relating to appropriation for current expenses and other expenditures for this, this for year 2015. And that was to be correctly identified on item 01074793, and it's just transfer of funds from one department to another. Item 9 is authorize the city to participate in ODOC cooperative purchasing program, and that is for salt for next year. And our salt costs anywhere from $60 a ton to $95 a ton. And I found out that grit costs $14 a ton, and sand costs $5.95 a ton. Much cheaper, of course, but we have to clean that up. Salt dissipates. So this will go, I believe we should waive that tonight, so we can authorize the city participating in that bidding process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tratchell. Any other reports before we move on? Okay, seeing none, we'll go reports to officials. I already have some.
Thank you, President Eleanor. In the fire department, we have had our billing services conducted by a company called MBI Medical Building Incorporated, I think it is. They've done our billing for ambulance runs to the hospital and medic services to the citizens for a number of years now. They have been purchased by a company called Med Account Management Incorporated, and they have purchased all the software that had been developed by Chief Creed and the MBI people last year, and they have taken the account representative that has worked with the city all the way through the process into their employment. So we see this acquisition, it's going to be totally seamless to the city in terms of the service that they provide, and it could return on billings that we've seen as a result of the harvest by the chief and the company. So we're optimistic about a seamless transition. Civil service testing for open positions in the police department was conducted this last Saturday at Transit. Results of the testing were for the chief position, Keith Washburn, got the top score. For captain, Tim Gay, got the top score. For sergeant position, Luke Hanson, got the top score to replace Tim Gay, who's being promoted to captain. And in light of Sergeant Cunningham, who retired, last week we promoted Michael Short to sergeant as well. So we're going to have a promotional ceremony on April the 1st, and time to be announced later on this week. And we'll give you more information when that's coming up, and that'll be a public notice, and that ceremony. I went to a jobs a lot board meeting at the Dean and Parker Center last week, and provided the comprehensive look into economic development for the region and the entire state, but the emphasis on Appalachia region. Appalachia, now the five quadrants of the state, had the lowest new jobs created, but it did have the highest dollars spent in capital costs. Most of that was due to fracking on the eastern part of the state. We did have some discussion on the effects of fracking on the whole workforce bench strength. And in the youth, the shale shell, right now the fracking is being pointed to identify the perimeter of that shale field. And once that perimeter has been established as where it starts and stops, wholesale drilling will take effect. People will get sucked out of the probably private sector into the fracking jobs at that point in time, which will create shortage of better workforce. So they're working on countermeasures to that. Also, last Friday, I had a meeting with Japanese Council General Katayama at the country club. We talked about the impact of Japanese invested business in Ohio. Currently in Ohio, there's over 400 companies of Japanese ownership, mostly in the automotive field, certain Honda and such, you can understand that, that they do a lot of electronics work and that. Reason I'm mentioning this is because of the, some new attention being paid to the Appalachia region, Ross County and Chillicothe in particular. He did mention that there's, there's a business potential for investment down in this area. So that's good news for the area. Lastly, the IFF contract was ratified last week by the union last Monday, and there were only four no votes. Out of all three contracts that have been negotiated over the last three years, there's been a total of nine no votes, and over 200 employees affected in those three unions. I think that's a compliment to the department has participated in those negotiations, as well as Brian Butcher, and what a name for a negotiator, but who was, by Miss Nelson, and just did a wonderful job for the city. There was concessions in all three contracts, and the city got a good deal of long-term damage repair in those contracts. So a great job by all the people involved in that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, President Eleanor. Just want to touch on a couple of the agenda items tonight. First, item 1, which is for third reading, I would ask for your favorable vote on item 1. I think this is a positive and practical move for the city. I believe that going forward, it eliminates sort of the annual conversation about whether or not the pool will be open, or at least, at the very least, puts it in a different context, which is a very good thing. So again, ask for your positive vote on item 1. And then item 7, I just wanted to expand on what Councilman Tratchell said. So what happened was that the, there was about $20,000, I believe, that was requested to be paid to replace the roof in a building across the street. I don't know, which was approved as a capital appropriation on a capitalist this year, but every year there's the same amount of money necessary for essentially unanticipated public plans and buildings repairs. And somehow, when the request came from the department, it reduced to just that roof replacement and repair. So those unanticipated expenses, because they will come and probably have already take precedent over the roof replacement, that is actually council action, it's needed to take basically unappropriate money for that capital expenditure, which was already listed, and change it to essentially different market. And that's why, as opposed to just going through the Finance Committee, we came to the full council. Anybody have any questions on that? It's simply essentially quote-keeper, but I wanted to clarify.
Back to the matter and check the wrong box on which capital project does prove a claim.
With that, my report's concluded.
Mrs. Tratchell.
President Eleanor, the Law Director's Office is currently working with the judges of the Municipal Court to establish a diversion program addressing the problems of underage alcohol consumption. The program is designed to allow underage persons to avoid criminal convictions while educating them about alcohol abuse. We're hoping to positively impact underage offenders who complete the program, and it's being created in response to higher revised code requirements. A member of my staff recently represented the Law Director's Office as above-tiered judge for the Ohio Center for Law-Rip-lated Education's 32nd Annual High School Mock Trial State Championship. And she said she saw a lot of really good, up-and-coming young people that maybe are going to be lawyers someday. And on a course, personal note, I spent the last four years as a, as my career as an assistant law director, being the prosecuting attorney in this courtroom. And I got the privilege to work with Judge Bunch, who sat in that, on that bench where you are right now. And I have to tell you that that man had the perfect disposition for a judge. He treated everybody with dignity and respect, and he had just the right sense of humor to make him the most perfect judge. And I have to tell you that he's going to be sorely missed in our community. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tratchell. Okay, that brings us to the audience participation portion of the evening, and I'd like to allow you to step to the microphone and give your name and address. And council rule limits in speaker to five minutes, and you subject to 15 minutes. Is anyone who would like to address council this evening?
My name is Ryan Wade, president of IFF Local 300. I just wanted to, I took liberty of passing out the flyers that we're using for our levy campaign, Citizens for Safe with Chillicothe. This is some info for, if you guys, in case you guys, this is the same info that we're going through our meetings with, and all that kind of stuff. And we're having a fish fry fundraiser on Friday, March 27th, at the Phoenix, from 11 to 6. So I have tickets with me tonight, and we're passing them along to coworkers, family members, and we'll have members of the committee there to answer any questions and get this information out to the voters. So we've had meetings almost daily, I think, talked to several civic groups, and so we're going to make sure we get word out there, so that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have to buy those tickets in advance, or will they be available that day?
Oh, no, you don't have to buy in advance, but they'll be, yeah, that day it'd be just fine.
Great.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to address council this evening? Seeing none, then, yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is William Barnhart. I live at 373 McKeller Street. And I guess last meeting, the mayor of council didn't hear what I said, or whatever. I see they're still having the council meetings here, wasting taxpayers' money. I mean, this is an awful big building just to have council meetings. The roof leaks, it's falling down, you ought to sell. Sell or close it down like you did the two fire stations. That way you can save taxpayers a little money. Couple weeks ago, there was a number in there, the Gazette, that called about a pothole, but the Gazette forgot to tell you that the pothole probably won't get fixed until after the May 5th election. Because I called one in as soon as I seen the number, and the only thing that potholes did is got bigger and deeper. That's over two weeks ago. So I don't know what the slowdown is, but I guess that'll help you pass that one, I think. But also, I'll direct this to the city engineer, Ben makes over $85,000 a year, and doesn't realize that there is a problem with the lights at Sabbath and Bridge, Fifth and Bridge, Walnut Main, Hickory and Main, and Ballberry and Main. I see a half a dozen transit buses run the red light there at Sabbath and Bridge. The sign says, "No right turn over red." And they get tired waiting for the light to turn green, so they run the red light.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
My name is Terry Williams, and I reside at 371 Flinders Lane. Just a question, one question and a statement. I know there's been some talk about Parks and Rec Director Dave Tenner making some kind of a sale or disposition of assets. Does anybody here know where we stand on that, whether Mr. Tenner has disposed of assets, particularly to Howzers?
I have something coming on that. We talked about getting, we took a inventory of non-functioning equipment in the Parks and Rec Department and the Service Department primarily last year, and Dave's been in contact with Howzer to see if they would want to sell, repair, or give us some trade-in value for that equipment. Chris, list was created, and they pulled the trigger a little too quickly on that. They came in and got, there's been no transaction on it outside of a change in location. We told Howzer, do not sell anything, do not do anything to that equipment, because we have to do material disposal, which on the items under $1,000, I want to get council approval on those over $1,000. There are three items that are there at Howzer's that are over $1,000, and we will get that back. We'll get the paperwork filed with that, Dave, in those processes.
So there's just been a change in possession, not necessarily a transaction?
Yeah, there's not many transactions at all.
And I just wanted to register my concern in the community. President Eleanor, I really appreciate your offering marvelous invitation before the city council's meeting today, and I know before, other council members have offered that as well. I express a concern, in particular of the location, that it may be more appropriate, and certainly I personally would feel more comfortable, if in locations were offered from behind the bar, as opposed to within the bar. As Eddie so eloquently stated during your installation, when you cross over that bar, you take a great deal of responsibility for representing the citizens of Chillicothe, and we know that you don't represent any official religion in this place. Those of us who do exercise religious right and authority in the community really want to safeguard that protection, particularly to keep civil liberties protected for everyone, not just those who necessarily practice our religion. So in the future, if you would please come to this side of the bar to offer invitations as a private citizen, that would do my heart very well. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, we'll move on to old business. The old business. All right, seeing none, that takes us to petitions in force, bonders, or see butler.
Madam President, I have none to enforce.
Thank you, sir. Is there new business? Mrs. Corcoran.
I'd just like to let everybody in here know that on Thursday at OUC from 9 till 12:30, I believe, the Ohio Ex-Offender Reentry Coalition will be gathering at OUC, and it is open to the public. And I'd also like to extend an invitation to people on council and in the mayor's office. And it's the impact of relationships and reentry, and we will be hosting several people from around the state. Gary Moore, the director of the rehabilitation, and the ODRC, and the chairperson of the ODYS will be attending and speaking. And then we will also actually be sharing community outreach initiatives that are being done here in Ross County, at the Terry Collins Reentry Center, by the Dave reporting that has been set up, and some of the groups and education that is going on out there. There will also be information about initiatives that are being done at CCI and RCI that are new in the, in the state of Ohio, and also new in reentry. And there will also be a juvenile branch report and a panel presentation, and then some local initiatives. And Robyn Knob, she's the Southwest Regional Director, will also be presenting on the program, "I Killed a Man," which is about that gentleman that I think a lot of people saw on YouTube, that came on to YouTube and said, "I, you know, told a story of killing a man drunk driving." And so, but there will be a lot of people here from the state coming for this initiative, and there also will be tours for people at Terry Collins Reentry Center. So I just wanted to let people know that was going on this week.
Thank you. Other new business? Mrs. Patrick.
Thank you. I just want to announce, council members got the press release about the large item drop-off. That's April 25th and May 2nd, those Saturdays, from 9 to 4. I would encourage council members to share that with anybody on your email list. Anything with me to get this dropped off to the streets and out of the yards, helps.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. Mrs. Gray.
I would like to make a note of this time, please, councilwoman things.
Second by Mr. Tratchell. Roll call on the motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Needle.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And the motion has been approved. Is there other new business? Meeting assignments and meeting dates. I distributed a short list of new assignments that were handed over to committee chairs this evening. Those have not been forwarded through email yet, and I'd like to share that tomorrow in case you'd like a digital copy of those items. That takes us to, are there meeting dates that need to be announced? I'm sorry, from committee chairs? in case you'd like a digital copy of those items. All right, that takes us to, are there meeting dates that need to be announced, I'm sorry, from committee chairs? Or pending meeting dates? Okay, that brings us to tonight's legislation. Mr. Paul.
Item one, third reading, of an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to move the municipal swimming pool department from the general fund to the recreation fund and directing that all amounts currently appropriated in said department be transferred to the new recreation fund, municipal swimming pool department. Third reading.
And as third reading, we'll have roll call on ordinance.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
That ordinance has passed. Second item.
Item two is second reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty thousand dollars from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to be used by the Chillicothe Police Department and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Paul.
At this time, I'd like to waive the pre-read rule because this was something that was supposed to be in the original budget, but was never signed.
Motion was made by Mr. Corcoran, seconded by Mr. Trechall. Roll call on the motion to waive the pre-read rule.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars in funds received from the U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for the purchase of body cameras for the Chillicothe Police Department and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Item number four.
Second reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating sixty-five hundred and fifty dollars received as reimbursement from Sprint for Chillicothe Police Department radio upgrades and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Cole.
At this time, I'd like to ask that we waive the pre-read rule so that we can accept this money.
Motion has been made by Mr. Corcoran, seconded by Mrs. Neal. Roll call on the motion.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
Pre-read rule has been waived, will have roll call on the ordinance.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, did I jump ahead?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to waive the pre-read rule has been adopted, and we will have roll call on the ordinance, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, did I jump ahead?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to waive the pre-read rule has been adopted, and we will have roll call on the ordinance, please.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
And now that ordinance has passed. We're on item number seven.
Second reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 115-14 relating to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city during fiscal year 2015 and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Item number eight.
Second reading of a resolution granting use of the city park and surrounding streets from Wednesday, May 20, 2015, at 5:30 P.M. through Monday, May 25, 2015, at 12:00 P.M. for preparation and operation of the annual feast of the flowering moon and providing for coordination of its events with the city Parks and Recreation Department and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Item number nine.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the city to participate in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Trechall.
Thank you. For reasons stated, my report, I also would like to make a motion to waive the pre-read rule.
Motion has been made, seconded by Mr. Patrick. Roll call on the motion to waive the pre-read rule.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
And the pre-read rule has been waived, will have roll call on the ordinance.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
And the pre-read rule has been waived, will have roll call on the ordinance.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tattman.
Yes.
Trechall.
Yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item number 10.
First reading of an ordinance establishing rates of pay and other economic benefits